It's called the April 8th Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting to Order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone. Start with roll call.
Carrie?
Here.
Walton?
Here.
Stephenson?
Here.
Wilhelm?
Here.
Schlotower?
Here.
All right. Ceremonies, announcements, appointments, presentations. Do we have any tonight?
None.
None. Any amendments to the agenda?
There is not.
All right. Commission members, any declaration of conflict, expertise, conduct, or site visions?
None.
Seeing none. All right. Mr. Manley, could you present the consent calendar, please?
Yeah, we got Action Item A, which is the meeting minutes from March 11th, 2025. And we have Action Item B, the Idaho Ranch Annexation Zoning Recommendation, File Number ANNX 248.
Anything, any questions, commission members? Anybody like to make a motion on the consent calendar, please?
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second. Have a roll call, please.
Carrie?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Wilhelm? Schlotower?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
All right. Next item is citizen issue. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the commission. On an issue that is not on the agenda tonight, persons wishing to speak will have five minutes. Do we have anybody who wants to speak? All right, seeing none. We have any unfinished or old business?
There is none.
Okay. All right, that'll bring us into the bulk of our meeting, which is the public hearing tonight. If you're wishing to speak during the hearing, please fill out the form in the back and bring that up to the front over here, and we'll bring that up at that time. We'll open the public hearing. Is it Linger? How do you pronounce it? Linger?
I think it's Linger.
Okay.
For tonight.
Okay, that works, too.
So yes, John Manley, planning manager here at the City Post Falls, to present the Linger Annexation, File Number ANNX 2411. The owner is Mickey Linger, and the applicant's representative is Jeremy Trazuli, who is here tonight. They are requesting a recommendation to city council for medium-density R2 zoning on approximately 4.54 acres as part of the annexation request. Now, as a reminder for everybody, this is just a zoning recommendation. No decision on the annexations being made tonight. It's just a recommendation for city council to consider as part of the zoning recommendation. Project location is as you see here, highlighted in the red box. It's a bit west of the intersection of West Midway Avenue and McGuire. Surrounding zoning, just to the southeast in the City Post Falls, we've got some medium-density R2 townhome product, and to the south of that, we have some single-family product. East of McGuire, you see, that's a Montrose subdivision. You see some single-family development in a PUD. There is some multifamily and a church that's also out in that area in the PUD. To the southeast, you do have other industrial zones. To the south along Seltice Way, you see the commercial zoning and the heavy industrial zoning along Seltice Way. So the, some additional information on the site itself, it's currently a large lot, single-family use on it, so over the Russian Periochfer. The water provider would be the East Green Acres for the site, with the wastewater being provided by the City Post Falls. In the staff report, you can see that the city is and has the ability to serve the site at the request of density. Additionally, Midway Avenue is classified as a minor arterial, I mean, a minor collector, sorry, that's a collector, and nearby McGuire Road is a minor arterial. With the annexation, we would get additional rights-of-way along Midway Avenue. Future land use is as you see here, this is that blue area. It's transitional. It points to the focus area to look for direction on decisions, and it's the project site and the location of that west prairie area. Here is the, the minor collector roadway of Midway and the project location and proximity, and you can see the minor arterial McGuire to the east, so there's that location of the site. One thing in the staff report, I denoted that this area is a bit of a complicated area with kind of looking at what is the most appropriate to go from the, what is denoted in the future land use map. So we see here, here's Seltice Way, and then this black line is the current city limits, and we have the railroad corridor, but behind this, these commercial uses that are along Seltice Way, our current comp plan calls out some high-density residential. And the reason why that's called out is we did a workshop when we adopted the comprehensive plan. It was deemed as a way to mitigate some of those uses through a built environment vertically to reduce some of the impacts of the noise and light pollution that could come along Seltice Way. And then you would transition from those with some medium-density that you see here in the lighter orange, and then we have that transitional, knowing that this area is more than likely going to transition into being an municipal, the City of Post Falls, at some time in the future, whether it's five, 10, 15, 20 years from now, this area is going to be getting more and more pressure to be asked and be served with City of Post Falls services. Both, I think, I believe, our transportation master plan and our wastewater master plan has plans in serving this area. And you can see here on the right, I have a picture of the aerial, this, in this orange cloud area is this area that is looking at how is this going to transition going forward? And I kind of highlighted that along the western boundary on Corbin, you have the trailer park out there, which is consistent with more of a medium-density residential-type product, about the same density of like a cottage home product. Then we have Seltice Way, which has a mix of commercial-industrial-type uses along there with some trailer parks included. And then along McGuire Road, along the east side of that, the bulk of this area adjacent to this area that called out in the orange cloud are either commercial uses, industrial uses, there's some churches, and there is some at the northern limits. This is about where some of that single-family uses are within the Montrose subdivision. So it's an interesting area that's surrounded predominantly by other medium-density-type products. And the question is, like with these areas, what is appropriate? And so looking at the comprehensive plan and some of our policies may help provide some insight on that. So looking at the future land use here and then looking at the focus area, calls out future growth should embrace a variety of housing types, land uses maintain quality standards, provide a greater emphasis on pedestrian friendliness and connecting neighborhoods. Goal six, maintain and improve Post Falls' transportation network and on pace with concert needs and objectives. Oftentimes, this is achieved with annexations by the right-of-way that's given to the city with annexations. And what that right-of-way does is within Policies 24 and 26, it allows for improved corridors, improved roadways, it allows for sidewalks and paths to connect other sidewalks and paths. To the southeast here, we do have this area that's in the city, so they improve the majority of, from like the center of the roadway, south, and put in some of those improvements along the southern end. If this was developed, it would be the opposite, they would be doing the northern. That's oftentimes how these areas develop, is you get some south, some north, and then in-betweens eventually come in and annex in and provide those other connections. Do you have a question, Raj?
Is it contiguous?
Yes, on the corner. So based off of historical practice, as long as you are abutting on the corners of the properties, we have deemed that as being contiguous.
Even a perfect corner?
Yep.
Good to know.
What you're not allowed to do is utilize right-of-way. It's called like a shoestring annexation, is use right-of-ways to go down and annex and utilizing right-of-way as bringing contiguous. That wouldn't be contiguous if you have to use right-of-way to get to a site.
One more question.
Yep.
As long as you stopped. Do you know if there was a zone change before the council on the south portion of that that you showed a second ago? Do you know if that, what happened there?
Was it on one of the, oh, on this one?
Uh, no, up, up there. Nope. Down. There. The stuff you said was single-family.
So that one there initially came to the, this one down here, the single-family?
Yeah.
It initially came to the city, and they initially asked for R2, I believe, I don't have the record memorized, but from my memory, I believe that they got forwarded to city council with R2, and then they initially, though, got approved with an R1, and the applicant decided to accept that R1 as part of the annexation approval.
Mm-hmm.
And they went and signed that agreement. Similarly, the lands to the north.
But they came back before us, just a few months back.
Oh, they gave you, they did came for a portion. This is the one, yes, you're right. That portion right up here, there was about two lots there, or three?
Three.
Yeah, three that they were wanting to go to.
Yeah.
R2 on a portion of that.
Yeah, has that gone to city council yet?
No, they have asked us to withdraw that application for now.
I see.
So more than likely, it would be coming back through the public process again.
Gotcha. All right, sorry to interrupt.
It's all good.
I was gonna ask the same question, so you're good.
So looking at those policies, I kind of already went over the continuity that the, you would get the extension of some improvements to about right here. Looking at Goal Seven, which is plan for different types of quantities of land use to help cities' long-term sustainability, one of those is Policy 15, looking at the housing needs that help serve residents of all ages, incomes, and abilities and provisions through diverse housing types and price levels. R2 has been kind of that niche, that medium-density, to provide some of that attainable missing middle with cottage opportunities, townhome opportunities, twin-home opportunities, and Here is the, we kind of gone over briefly, the one and two in the staff report, I did go over more goals and policies that were mentioned in this presentation. Looking at review criteria three, is there any demonstrable adverse impact that's been proposed with the zone change or the zoning request with the annexation? Here's who we notified, here's the responses, you can see the, pretty much no really comments of concerns. You've got the Department of Environmental Quality here, no environmental impact, and YTL, no utilities in the vicinity. So yeah, I'd stand for any questions you have for me, any additional ones.
I just had a quick question. There was one comment from someone about roadwork and stuff, and that would be something that would be later on in this process, right?
As far as doing the improvements?
Yeah, she.
On, on Midway?
Yeah, the road improvements and stuff.
So the road improvements on Midway would occur with the construction of.
She was talking about the road, the right-of-way and some different things.
Yeah, the right-of-way dedication would happen prior, as part of the recording the annexation ordinance, if it gets approved. The Midway improvements would occur with the construction of any subdivision that was approved.
Yeah.
That subdivision would come back before.
So that would be the time for them to come back and.
And they would show the improvements on Midway and be part of that, that package that would go with that.
I thought so, I just wanted to verify.
What's the current location of utilities in terms of like water and sewer?
Um, I don't have that memorized, so I would call up Rob Paulist. He may know off the top of his head where most utilities are in this area.
Just approximate. Good evening, members of the commission. Robert Paulis, city engineer. There is waterline in Midway Avenue that's controlled by East Green Acres Irrigation District, and the City of Post Falls has sanitary sewer, which would be at the southeast corner of the property. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Hey, we didn't even have to lower or raise it this time.
I was waiting to see it, I was hoping for it.
All right.
So would they then extend the sewer, though, with the?
Yeah, so that's, yeah, usually do the extension of services if possible. We are, I do believe, I talked with Rob, there is a sewer basin issue that does occur, so depending on how they discuss with their engineering nearing department, the extensions may or may not go to a certain point because sewer may go to a different basin, and so you would just extend to the, the limits of that sewer where that it could be served.
There's capacity involved.
Yeah, for this, this proposal, there's capacity to go and connect, yes. What's that? Function there? There we go.
Good evening, commissioners. Jeremy Trazuli, I'm a land use consultant acting on behalf of the North Idaho REI team that is the contract buyer for this property. As always, city staff does a great job, I appreciate John's efforts on that. He did point out, it's a bit of a tricky area, and I hope through my presentation to kind of point out why we think that R2 is the appropriate zoning designation for this property if city council deems it worthy of annexation. So this is the summarized, dumbed-down version of our review criteria type for any change or annexation request with a zoning designation. Is it consistent with the future land use map, and specifically the focus areas? Is it consistent with goals and policies in the comprehensive plan, and what are the impacts on any service providers in the area? So the future land use map has this property in this area, as John pointed out, as transitional, so transitional tends to push us to the associated focus area, and transitional implementing zoning districts, again, punt to whether or not it is consistent with adjacent land uses, and does it, does it show consistency with the principles in the associated focus area? So this is the map straight out of the comprehensive plan that does describe the focus area of the property there, is the star sort of on the edge of West Ridge and the West Prairie, but firmly in the West Prairie. And again, John pointed out, it's kind of a tricky area. The reason we believe R2 is the appropriate zoning designation is because it's sort of wedged between other medium-density developments, commercial and industrial uses, you know, less than a half mile to the south along Seltice, as well as that UP line, which is a fairly active line for the railroad. We feel that some more entry-level housing in this area, we wouldn't anticipate a lot of high-end homes going adjacent to a railroad track, so I think that's why this little wedge piece here is more appropriate for a medium-density residential. So the West Prairie focus area, the most applicable part of that out of the comprehensive plan, highlighted here in yellow, that they see a mixture of residential envisioned between McGuire and Corbin Road with those higher densities near the commercial corridors and arterials, this being roughly 600 feet off of that McGuire, that north-south arterial. So this is a map, I froze all of the property boundaries on this because it got a little muddy in the street names, but this area here, that's McGuire. This is Midway, and just out of the screen is going to be Seltice. And I've shown what are the current zoning designations and uses to show compatibility with adjacent uses. We've got the medium-density residential that sort of straddles McGuire. We've got County to the north and to the west with the anticipation that, as John pointed out, over the next decade or so, we would probably see some more of these five-acre parcels come forth for annexation requests. Commercial and industrial adjacent to Seltice. So yeah, we felt that the R2 was an appropriate zoning designation for this five-acre piece. So this is a blow-up of most of the city and its current adopted zoning. This piece over here, that's the piece we're talking about. And I wanted to demonstrate in here, if you look at some of the yellow circles I've put on here, that this development pattern that is consistent around the rest of the city, you've got arterials or major corridors, you tend to have some commercial or high-density residential near those corridors, near the intersections. A lot of times, that commercial and industrial will then stage back to high-density residential apartment buildings. You put that medium-density residential kind of buffering, commercial, industrial, high, high-density residential, and your traditional R1. You'll see that over here at 41 and 12th. All of these areas south of Seltice, off of Ross Point, you see that tiering effect a lot where commercial, industrial on the corridor, high-density multifamily, medium-density tiered to the R1, and I think we're going to see that out here, but again, that anomaly is the railroad track, so I would anticipate this area adjacent to the trailer court, some additional medium-density, and that UP line that runs through there, that we probably see more requests for the medium-density in this area as opposed to traditional R1. And as the areas north of the tracks start to go up towards Prairie, I think we'll see some more of that R1 where we're not encumbered by the railroad track. Staff had a very long list of goals and policies. I felt that a couple that weren't in the staff report were worth mentioning, that to maintain the city's long-term fiscal health, creating a variety of residential options and different price points is critical, as well as maximizing infrastructure that exists. This sewer basin has capacity, pipes are in the ground, and adding additional capacity into those is fiscally responsible, as well as Policy Three. Smaller homes on smaller lots is likely to cater to those first-time homebuyers, or perhaps even some older folks looking to downsize. And Policy Three talks a lot about suitably scaled development close to services, close to additional, additional areas that can be walked or biked to as opposed to hopping in a car. So a lot of these first-time homebuyers and perhaps some, some people downsizing might be single-vehicle households, and this will allow walkability to, within a half-mile of a park, a playground, a school, a church, a gym, and a convenience store to the south, and it's also within walking distance to a bar, if you're into that sort of thing. And as far as any impact on the delivery of services, we have to rest on city staff and their noticing of all the agencies, and as John pointed out, no comment that any adverse effects might be felt in this area with this request. With that, I stand for any questions.
Questions?
Could you show the map again that you had there, just a few slides back?
That one?
Yeah, that one.
Sure.
The one off of McGuire that you have circled, is that representing your property?
Yeah, and you can see the.
Because from what I see, you're not on McGuire, right?
No, we're about, we're one parcel west of McGuire.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
It's right at the top of that circle.
Yeah, kind of the line goes through.
I was pointing out the development to the south. It's already medium-density.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
But that's a mixture of R2 and R1 to the south.
Correct.
Right? And that the far south is R1, that smaller part.
Correct.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Wishing to speak, yes, in opposition, Debbie Voca? Just state your, yeah, state your name for the record, and clock's over here, four minutes.
Debbie Vaca. Do I need to give my address or anything?
No, don't worry about it.
I live on Echo, which is the street south of Midway, and this area is still very rural, very quiet, not very crowded. There's only one R2 off of McGuire in this area. A lot of people still have animals, and there's not really a lot of places to walk to. I mean, yeah, there's little convenience stores, but people do walk, they have, you know, their dogs, and they take walks. But I just feel that this area should be kept a little bit more, not crowded, rural. There's enough of that already, the medium-density is just everywhere now, and there should still be places for people to have the little farms for the animals and the 4H programs for kids. I don't really think that this is in a good spot for R2. I mean, I know that the future land map is transitional right now, which I don't know really what that means, I guess whatever people want to go for. I just disagree with the R2. I think this should just be an R1, if anything. We have a lot of nice custom homes in this area, and R2 is going to bring down the property value. Let's see. And I know that developers are just really concerned with their profit, and with the R2, that's just more money for them. The R1 is not as much money, but that shouldn't dictate, you know, them just coming in and just doing whatever they think is right. And I do feel like the water treatment plant is already an issue. We smell it a lot now, that wasn't like that before, so the more they keep putting in, it's just going to get worse. And then I do understand that the lot that is to the east of this one, off of McGuire, is going to be R1, so I don't know why we need to put these little pockets of R2 where we're mostly R1 that's happening. All right, thank you, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Trazuli, would you like to rebut?
Again, for the record, Jeremy Trazuli. So yeah, the transitional designation, as I pointed out, it does point us back to the comp plan and talks about adjacent property uses and the focus area, and so, no, it's not just whatever anybody feels is appropriate, so that's why we outlined that in there. So what I will say, why the R2? This is a small group of, of local real estate agents that are dipping their toe in some We talked to them about bringing forth a subdivision application concurrent with the annexation, but there's always the risk of being denied the annexation, and designing a subdivision to a 70, 80% plan set to be a complete application is, it's costly, tens of thousands of dollars. They have engaged an engineer, and I think that's why Ray's not here tonight, because I believe they'll be working with Whipple. They do have a preliminary plat, just the horizontal layout. Their goal is to do single-family detached. They just needed slightly smaller lots to make this make sense for them. I feel like when we get to council, that's a discussion that we're going to have with them, because they're probably going to want to put some guardrails on what goes here. These guys want to do it responsibly, they've already teamed up with a builder. If we move to the next step, the original, the preliminary proposal does talk about, is that on? Okay, sorry. The preliminary proposal does talk about what they have planned with Whipple, is for 25 units on here, but again, they didn't want to move to a full-blown subdivision, not knowing if the annexation would be approved. So I know when we get to council, that would be part of the discussion. So the R2 ask is simply so they could do slightly smaller lots than the 6,500 in R1. They're willing to talk with council about density restrictions within that zoning development agreement, but back to how this area should develop out, it's the property that's currently on there. To say that it's in disrepair would be an understatement, it's uninhabitable, that's what's there. So this group decided to take a shot at this, see if they could get it annexed and redevelop it. Part of why the cities have their area of city impact is because when properties are contiguous and adjacent to city limits, if this doesn't get annexed in and they can't make. if this doesn't get annexed in and they can't make, uh, if they can't make the project pencil, if they move it to somebody else, somebody scrapes the house that's on there, this becomes a, a, you know, new three, four thousand square foot home on a five-acre piece, it will not likely be, uh, come up for annexation again for a good twenty, twenty-five, thirty years until that home has, uh, has reached its useful life. That's just the reality of properties adjacent to city limits. And I know it's a, it's a real push-pull dynamic that the city has to weigh out. We feel wedged in here, um, fairly close to the, to the trailer court. As I pointed out, a half-mile to the Seltice corridor, uh, two miles to an on-ramp and the, uh, you know, the, the carpool lot adjacent to Pleasant View. We just feel that some of these starter homes in this area are the most appropriate ask. And that's all I have for right now. We respectfully request, uh, the R two zoning designation. And my clients asked me to clarify that they have closed on the property with, with Mickey Lingar and they now do own the property just as a point of clarification. So, are there any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Close the public hearing out and we'll look at the review criteria.
All right, thank you, uh, chairman, members of the commission. Tonight, we have before you A N X, A N N X twenty-four dash eleven, the Lingar annexation. Uh, zoning recommendations, four-point-five acres, R two is what is being requested. Uh, so zoning criteria number one, is the proposed zoning district consistent with the future land use map and focus area contained in the currently adopted Post Falls Comprehensive Plan?
Well, this lot is within the transitional designation. And the transitional designation is, is kind of a little open-ended. But if we go back to the, uh, the key policies that are laid out for the West Prairie District, it does talk up quite a bit about the mix of residential and commercial, uh, higher densities near commercial corridors and arterials. It seems that what we're looking at doing here, especially in conjunction with adjacent zoning and adjacent development, seems to be, uh, fitting with that. That's my thought.
Yeah, there. I'm just going-
What I'd like to say is, it's nice to see that it's not ours three, is what we're looking at right now. Uh, R two up next to, uh, the railroad tracks would work. It gives people ownership instead of living in apartments. So that, I really like about that. And as the gentleman said about that place on there, it is a complete disaster out there. I was raised fifty yards from this whole thing. And they just bulldozed another place down over there that had been vacant for thirty years, I think. So something like this would probably work good right there next to that railroad tracks.
Just got to piggyback a little bit on what Commissioner Schreiber said. The transitional area is always kind of, to me, it's been a little vague, and I've said this in workshops before, that it's like transitional to what? And this area, you know, you can look at the goals and policies, but there's not a lot around it, it's still growing. So really, it's like, what does it fit to me? It's far enough north of Seltice that maybe it should be transitioning to R one, but there is R two around it. Um, I'm not too concerned about the railroad tracks because we got a ton of R one around railroad tracks, but that is a consideration. But it does fit a lot of the policies and goals for R two also.
Okay, thank you. Uh, number two, you know, and again, this dovetails a little bit in the discussion we just had. Uh, is the proposed zoning district, that is, R two, consistent with the goals and policies contained in the, uh, comprehensive plan that are relevant to the area under consideration? So what I'm looking here for is, is if commissioners could, are going to approve the zoning recommendation, uh, identification of any goals or policies that they believe aid in that designation.
Uh, the first one jumps out at me is goal fifteen, talking about the water, water sewer infrastructure, it's right there on, on Midway, yeah.
And to the comment about the wastewater treatment plan, I know they did some upkeep on that recently, so maybe that will alleviate some of that smell that is, has been around.
There was also some discussion, I think, on the, uh, transportation improvements, uh, for the right-of-way acquisition. I don't know if that, uh, if any of the commissioners agreed with the fact that the northern portion of that roadway would come into the city right-of-way as well as supporting the application?
Yeah, I think any, any application and annex that could improve the sidewalks and roads and right-of-ways is, is good for the city to continue that connectivity from neighborhoods around.
And with goal seven, you know, supporting community needs, we need some affordable housing, R two steps to affordable housing.
Thank you.
When it comes to the transportation, my only concern with that is we've got the, the south side of Midway, Kitty Corner has been approved, has been widened and improvements being made there for that development. Then we flip and we're going to have the north side widened and improved for this. So we're going to have a street that kind of goes twenty feet this way and then switches and goes twenty feet this way. It's going to be a little awkward, at least at first, until that north, what would be the northwest corner of Midway and Maguire gets improved. But there, but there's nothing we can really do about that.
I think the center line will probably be consistent, and so it'll just be that it has, it's wider and the sidewalks are the thing that are going to be inconsistent.
Yeah.
But what do you do?
There's not much we can do about it.
I drive by that every single day and they tore down that old house on the corner, so they're getting ready to come in here too. So that will probably be all the same, both sides will be-
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, and finally, uh, the demonstrable, does it, the proposed zoning district create a demonstrable adverse impact upon the delivery of any services?
There was none noted.
None, nothing in the step part. No public testimony?
I think it's always a concern, what are the impacts? And I think we're talking about that and addressing that. From the city's perspective, uh, you know, water, sewer, power, that's there. Road improvements are there to a certain extent and are going to be improved. That's all good things. Everyone's always concerned about increased traffic. But we look at what our city staff has done in terms of planning out these roads and so forth, and they're not at capacity as it is. So I think we're okay there. That's mine. Two cents worth.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other thoughts?
Uh, maybe I'm the oddball in this, but I'm kind of on the fence between R one and R two, but you can see both.
They're going to do single-family and not attached and go to R three, which they could do if they wanted to, or they could try, you know, apply for. So.
Heard there are a lot of, there are, there would be arguments for R one or R two, I think. I think either one could definitely be supported, but I don't really think it's, I think it's up to the, the property owner, really.
Yeah. Any other thoughts or would somebody like to make a motion?
Okay, I move to recommend, recommend approval of Lingar annexation, A N N X dash twenty-four dash eleven. Finding that the requested zoning meets the approval criteria in the Post Falls Municipal Code as outlined in our deliberation and direct staff to prepare a zoning recommendation of R two to be provided to the city council.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Carrie?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Wilhelm?
Yes.
Schlothauer?
Yes.
Schreiber?
All right, that'll move forward to city council for the annexation part of it. Next item on the agenda, administrative and staff reports.
There's none.
None tonight. Any commissioner comments? No commissioner comments. All right. Next item is adjournment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, adjourned.